Good evening and welcome to League of Women Voters of Bellingham Watcom County Forum for Candidates for the Ferndale School Board. My name is Allison Williams and I'm your moderator this evening. The land we are on this evening is the traditional ancestral and unceded territory of the Lummi and Nuxak people, the original inhabitants of Washington's northernmost coast and southern British Columbia. Since time immemorial, they've celebrated and cared for their land and waters to perpetuate their way of life. Please join me in deep gratitude for their ongoing wisdom and guidance as we take a moment to honor their ancestors and acknowledge the past, present, and future Lummi and Nuxak people as the original inhabitants of the land. Our media partners are the Salish Current, the Northern Light, the Linden Tribune, K M R E eighty-eight FM Community Radio, and Bellingham TV. We thank them most sincerely for their support. The forum will be available on YouTube through our website. Founded in nineteen twenty, the League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. To that end, we work to increase understanding of major public policy issues and also influence public policy through education and advocacy. The League never endorses a candidate or a party. Membership is open to both men and women sixteen years old and older, and we invite all of you to join us. We say democracy is not a spectator sport. Membership information is available on our website. So let's get started. Tonight's forum is for candidates for the Ferndale School Board. There are three seats, each of which has two candidates on the ballot, and I would like to introduce for seat one, Kevin Erickson and Beth Perry. For seat two, Brent Bodie and Antonio Machado. Brent Bodie is not here tonight as he is out of town on a business trip. And for seat three, Tony Jefferson and Nancy Button. The Ferndale School District Board responsibilities include advocating on behalf of students and schools, representing the community, developing and adopting district policy, monitoring operations, hiring and evaluating the superintendent of schools, resolving disputes, establishing current and long-range educational plans and programs for the district, setting general goals and adopting policies upon which instructional programs will be based, all of which must be in accordance with the state law and regulations promulgated by the superintendent of Public Instruction and the State Board of Education, determining school housing needs, purchases, disposes of or leases of school sites, and approves building plans that will support and enhance educational programs, determining assignment of staff and allocation of staff time, evaluating teaching materials, and maintaining ongoing personal communication with school staff, students, and members of the community. Directors are elected for a four-year term and represent all citizens of the school district. We will follow specific rules for the debate this evening. There will be no opening statements. Instead, the introductory question is tailored to illicit responses consistent with opening statements. Candidates will have one and a half minutes to respond to each question and will make a one-minute closing statement. The order of questions and closing statements is by seat alphabetically, and this will be rotated every question. Each candidate has a challenge card. Can you show us your challenge card? Available? Thanks. And candidates may use this card to challenge or rebut their opponent's response. The challenging candidate will have thirty seconds to state the challenge and his opponent will have thirty seconds to respond to the challenge. Each candidate may use their challenge card just one time. Timer Nancy Geng will be tracking the time, and the timer is up in the upper left-hand corner of the screen. The timer background will flash to yellow when there are fifteen seconds left and then to red when time is out. I will ask you to stop talking at that time if necessary. We ask that the candidates be respectful of the time allotted due to the limited amount of time we have and our desire to include as many questions as possible. Members of the public were able to submit questions through the League of Women Voters Bellingham Watcom County website up through today. These questions were screened to ensure they were not duplicates and were appropriately addressed to both candidates. So with the rules covered, let's get started. Timer, are you ready?
Ready.
Okay. So candidates, you will each have one and a half minutes to respond to the question. And our first question is, in what school district or in what community activity or organizations have you been involved? Candidate Erickson, please give your response now.
So over the past years, I've been involved on the school board, but also have been involved volunteering within the schools. I've been involved as a supporter of the band and the FFA, and helping with those programs, particularly the veterinary science program with the FFA, and then as a band booster and helping with supporting their activities. And then various volunteering opportunities within the classrooms that my children were in while they were in school.
Thank you. Candidate Perry, your response, please?
Yes, I grew up here in Watcom County and mostly the last few years have been in raising my children and homeschooling them. So mostly what I've done in the community is helped out with church organizations, especially with children. My education is working with young children, so I have done extensive work with very young children preschool and elementary school age in things like BBS activities.
Thank you. Candidate Machado, your response, please?
Yeah, thank you for your question. Yeah, when it comes to the community, that is something that I am very, very invested in. I have been in the Board of the Ferndale Chamber of Commerce. I have been the president of the Board of the Ferndale Chamber of Commerce. I have also, I have been a youth leader in the community, and I have also been a soccer coach. Actually, I'm an active soccer coach of my youngest daughter's soccer team here in Ferndale, and I thoroughly enjoy that. I have volunteered in the schools, and I am known in the Horizon Middle School as the DJ for their parties, too. I like to participate and be involved with my kids and the kids in the community. I thrive on that.
Thank you. Candidate Button, your response, please? You're muted.
I'm sorry about that. Okay, thank you for starting it over. The Ferndale School District, my husband and I raised our kids coming through Skyline and Vista, and they both graduated Ferndale High School. I started teaching in the district in the year two thousand and taught for twenty years at Central Elementary primarily, teaching literacy and then fourth grade, and finished my career with five years teaching fifth grade. One year there, within that twenty years, I did one year teaching in the Philippines at Sabu International School, and I took a one-year leave of absence. Before getting into the Ferndale School District, I was involved in the Ferndale Cooperative Preschool. I was the president of that for a couple of years. And then when my kids went into Skyline, I was the PTO president there for a couple of years. So my heart has been in education for many, many years, and in Ferndale in particular.
Thank you. Candidate Jefferson, your response, please?
Hello, thank you for having me here tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to share information about myself. I appreciate it. So the time that I've been here in the Ferndale School District arenas with my son primarily, he's twelve right now, so we went through Eagle Ridge. We had a lot of events through that experience, kindergarten through fifth grade. He's now in seventh grade, and so, you know, we would go to the open houses, the book fairs. And then for volunteer opportunities, I'm too impassioned about the youth. I participated in the Cedar Project, which was a program that brought all walks of life together, the youth, adults, and our elders. And so that was a great experience to be able to create a gracious space where we all can come together and connect and talk about each other's experiences present day and as well as the past. And so I've also sat on our Lummi Education Board for the Lummi Tribe. We have a K through twelve school. So I've sat on that board for about two years and learned about the different policies, procedures, the different funding sources, you know, just the policies in general. Thank you.
Thank you. For our next question, we're going to start with candidate Machado. What differentiates you from current school board members in your district and the other candidates?
Yeah, I would like to talk about my differentiation with my opponent. And what I, our biggest difference is probably that I have kids in the system. I have three kids that have gone through, through, you know, all the schools, you know, Eagle Ridge, Horizon, and now I'm there in the high school. So I have two in high school and one in elementary education. I understand what they're going through. I am an involved father that cares for my three kids. And in this specific forum, I want to highlight my specific concern and love for my two girls that I have and for the girls and the children in the school district. So that definitely gives me a different approach, different angle, more focused attention and care for the children in our district and which my opponent doesn't have. And of course, I care for their proper upbringing and for the things that they're seeing in these times that need to be addressed, and we need to care and meet them where they are.
Thank you. Candidate Jefferson, your response, please?
Thank you. You know, the value I think that I bring to the table is my experience as a school board member for the Lummi Nation. My experience as the general manager who oversaw our education system, which would be early learning all the way to our K through twelve school. So I'm very familiar with administrative protocols. I am a mother of a twelve-year-old in Horizon, as I mentioned earlier. I'm very, you know, I want to make sure he has a great education along with the rest of our Ferndale students. So I want to make sure that our policies align with our community values. As the former GM, I'm familiar with bringing stakeholders together to have some of those tough discussions that need to be had as a community. So I think I bring that to the table as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Button, your response, please?
Yes, I think my perspective of having taught in this district for twenty years will bring something to the table that isn't presently there, and I don't think that we've, as far as I know, I don't think there's ever been a teacher on the board, correct me if I'm wrong, Kevin, but in my experience, I've never known that there's been someone that has had the experience in the classroom and seen the direct effects of all the decisions that are made by the board and administration on learning for students and the impact in the classroom of those decisions, the things having to do with curriculum, allocation of funds. How, how things are in the classroom is directly affected by the decisions made by leadership. Another thing that I would bring is absolute transparency. I know that there are things that are not very transparent in our district, and I would advocate for making sure that parents know all that's going on in the classrooms and not have any policies that undermine that. So I would be an advocate for parents, and I have the perspective of a teacher as well. And I have a passion for education, and this would be a very good way for me to serve the students and families in a new way in Ferndale.
Thank you. Candidate Perry, your response, please?
Yes, I, what I bring is, is I can listen to people and I'm approachable, and I understand that parents are not happy with the district and they've been pulling their kids out of school. As I'm a homeschool mother, I know that parents are not happy with what is being taught. More and more parents want to pull their kids out of school. They don't understand why they're not being heard. Every single board meeting they go to, they're like, why aren't they listening to me? And they want to be heard. They want to know why some things are being taught that they don't agree with, and and they're just frustrated. So I understand where these parents are coming from, and there's so many parents that want to pull their kids out and can't. And that's what I understand. I was also learning disabled. I had an IEP growing up, so I understand the plight of children with learning disabilities and how hard and frustrating that is for not only the parents, but also the students. I had a child with an IEP in the Ferndale District, and I just understand it from both perspectives. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Erickson, your response, please?
Thank you. I think the biggest thing that I probably bring in looking at the whole scope of the current board and potential board is experience. Having been on the board for a while, I know some of the things you can and can't do. It always amazes me when new people come on the board, you know, myself included, the ideas and things that we're going to change and make better, and I think that's good. Unfortunately, sometimes we run into roadblocks because, as you stated in the initial, the board runs things under the state rules, and state rules sometimes supersede what we want to do. I think I listen to people well and hear all sides, and it's important when you are in a community that has as many people and as many different cultures, languages, and everything else that are represented, I think it's important to hear everybody's voice and to put that into perspective into making decisions that are the best for all. Having had three sons that came up through the school and in various roles, having numerous family members, extended family members who have kids in the schools at the current time, I get a feel for what's going on and see, as Nancy said, some of the decisions and the impact. So I think that's an important aspect that I can bring to help lead the board as we move on and try to raise the community's children and to hear the community's voice and make our decisions accordingly.
Thank you. For this next question, we're going to start with candidate Button. If you had a magic wand, what particular need would you fill for your district?
Oh, I think I'd get tutors for every single kid in the district because we have had no bounce back from the COVID learning loss, and I think we need to make, wave our magic wand and swoop in there with direct instruction from tutors so these kids who are suffering from learning loss would would regain all that they have lost and then some. I want kids to be excited about learning. I want kids to thrive in these schools, and I think if they had the support necessary to thrive academically, there'd be a lot less of the problems that are happening in the schools. Our primary goal as educators is giving our students the best, best possible public education, and I know that there's money there from the COVID funds, and we should be using every bit of it for tutoring the kids who need it because there are many in need right now.
Thank you. Candidate Jefferson, your response, please?
Yeah, I agree with Nancy. I think more tutors definitely would be helpful. I know having maybe more staff in the classrooms would be another excellent idea. I know my son thrives with more of a one-on-one approach, smaller groups, he gets distracted less. And yeah, having that extra one-on-one support in the classroom, I think, would also help. Tutoring, you know, is good, but extending the classroom time, you know, for a twelve-year-old, I think that's a little bit of a challenge. You know, they get tired. It's a long day for them. And so I think more tutors, more support in the classroom, more one-on-one with the children, and if we can reach out to the parents and find out how we can help them create like easy pathways for them to support their child in day-to-day activities. I think that would be also helpful. Thank you.
Thanks. Candidate Erickson, your response, please?
Definitely anything that we can do to help, you know, academics improve and our students thrive. You know, rather than echo what Nancy and Tony have said, I think the other avenue that is important, if we could wave a magic wand and make things go away, would just be some of the insecurity and emotional, social, emotional issues that some of our students come with. You know, it's amazing. I think I had my first exposure to it when I was volunteering in a kindergarten classroom and coming from a traditional family and a supportive family, you know, was helping a kindergartner draw a picture and just made the common statement of, hey, you know, are you going to bring that home and show your mom and dad? And the kindergartner's response to me was, well, my dad's in prison. And that was an eye-opener for me that not every kid comes from that traditional family or not every kid has that support at home that they need. And it's amazing to see what programs that we have in the schools, like Be the One or, you know, the different activities that give them that social connection or give them that connection that they want to be there and how that helps improve their education. I would like to see that continued on.
Thanks. Candidate Perry, your answer, please?
Yeah, I think everybody's idea of having tutors is a great idea, so I won't go on that one. But I think one of the greatest things that we all know that helps learning and that we remember from our time in school is field trips. And I think there's a lot of red tape that prevents our school districts from doing field trips and other fun activities that the kids are memorable to them. These stick with them for the rest of their lives. I remember when I was three years old and I got to go to my sister's kindergarten teacher's house and watched them collect bees. Her husband was a beekeeper. They couldn't do that anymore because that's dangerous. We all hopped in the back of station wagons. And I think that I would love, not saying that that's necessarily the approach that we would take, but I think that if we're going to make school fun and school memorable, having some of these great projects and times outside of the traditional classroom but are actually learning. And actually, you know, that's why National Parks gives fourth graders free tickets because they know that a fourth grader will remember it more, and they let them into national parks for free. So I think that if I could wave a magic wand with all the other tutoring and other things, I would try to find a way to make learning more fun for these students with other activities like field trips.
Thank you. And candidate Machado, your response, please?
Yeah, so I am the person that I am because of my family, my parents, the values that they instilled in me. But I am also who I am because of those mentors in my life. And some of the best mentors that I have had in my life have been teachers, and they were there for me. So if you're asking me if I can wave a magic wand, would be I would want to support those teachers. I would like to understand their needs. After COVID, my goodness, poor teachers, they need the support, they need the motivation, we need to engage them. We need to give them the tools, the technology, the support with a great curriculum because if we have great teachers, we will have great learners. And I know that because I had some mentors in my life, some teachers that became almost second parents that were able to guide me, that were able to teach me, that were able to be an example. And if I could wave that magic wand, would be let's support our teachers, let's help them out, let's listen them. I don't like to hear when I hear of fatigue teachers, it breaks my heart. So if I could do something for the teachers, I would do it.
Thank you. For our next question, we'll start with candidate Perry. What is your vision for education in the district and how does it support the economy and quality of life in the community?
Great question. I would hope that Ferndale is always looking at our students and wanting to produce the best students we can so that when people get a Ferndale High School degree, it means something in our community. I think one of the best things that we need to do is we need to reach out to local businesses, especially like refinery businesses and say, what do you need so we can produce great valued employees in the future? Do we need to help them in STEM? Is it more like trades? Do we need to help our kids go into trades? It's not always college that's going to get kids a living wage job. These are great living wage jobs and some of these fantastic trades, and I think Ferndale could lead the way in the community about that. And I would love to see that we are fostering that in Ferndale. I know that it would just be fantastic if we could, you know, get the tutors in that we want to see and help with the COVID-nineteen learning losses, help the kids with their behavior in class. I think those are great things. But we need to have a vision for where these kids are going, and it's not always college. Sometimes they do stay here in Ferndale, but we can make sure that they have a great job when they come out, can get a great job when they come out of Ferndale High School. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Erickson, your response, please?
I would certainly agree that providing the students with the best education possible is the ultimate vision and goal of the school board and myself. The challenge is what is the best, and it isn't the same thing for everyone. Not every student is going to go to college. Not every student is going to go into a career. Some are going to go into the military. Some are going to go into various arts and things. I think it's exciting when I see the CTE program that Ferndale has and the wide scope of it. We probably have the, or we do have the most variety and most options for our students. We have a group of advisors to that committee that come from the community to give them input as to what skills do the students need. And I see us expanding that in partnerships with BTC with for kids that are going into trades, we have it for college in the classroom, keeping the kids in that high school environment as opposed to sending them to Running Start. You know, but again, every student is an individual and everyone has a different goal. So I think it's important that we look to those kids, and just like we have the IEPs for those students that have some learning challenges, I think we need to look at individualizing every student's education so that they get the skill set that they need, they get the support they need so that they can be successful in whatever life dream and goal they have.
Thank you. Candidate Machado, your response, please?
Yeah, I was born and raised in Mexico City, and I migrated to the United States for better education opportunities. I came here and I graduated with a degree, a science degree in chemistry, and I have raised my kids in Ferndale. And I am extremely happy, especially, you know, in this forum for the opportunities for my two daughters that they have in this country that otherwise in another country they wouldn't have. So my goal as a parent and especially as a dad is to be a mentor, a source of strength, and a champion for my daughter's aspirations. My support, guidance, and love will empower my daughters to reach their full potential and pursue their dreams without limitations, whatever they are. So education is key to progress. Education is key for our community. Education is key for the livelihood of our community. So I really think that what we need to do is use all our resources available to us. And we have industry, and we have community members that are engaged, that are willing to help our kids. And I know that we can make a difference by making sure that we focus on good education for our children and for the future of our country.
Thank you. Candidate Jefferson? Thank you. Candidate Jefferson, your response, please?
Thank you. It's a great discussion tonight. A lot of great ideas and, you know, I think everybody's here in the. For the right reason. You know, we we care about our kids. We wanna make sure that our education system prepares them. For the workforce to be a happy, healthy, contributing. You know, member of society and there are a lot of different opportunities out there for them to to gain employment. As the Silver Reef HR Director, you know, we handle a lot of the new hires and. We just recently started hiring eighteen-year-olds. So we're beginning to see the the quality of the students coming out of the education system. And, you know, just wanting to make sure that they're fully skilled and armed, basically, to handle the workforce. It's important and developing those different partners within the community is also important. I like the idea of reaching out. To organizations and finding out, you know, getting that feedback, like how are our students doing? So I think that could be a strengthening point in the years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Button, your response?
Yeah, I think every single one of us who is running for the school board has the same. Positive motives for the kids. We are all in this because we care very much about the future of our children and our society. And I mean, there's no doubt about that with all of us. So I would bring to the table, I think we need to question how we are teaching our kids. Because what we've been doing is advancing children along by age. If you're born on a certain date, you automatically get socially promoted to the next grade level. No matter whether you have mastered the skills or not. And that compounds over time. And as a teacher, I remember being very frustrated that the the wide span of ability levels in. The classroom was exacerbated by this policy. I think we need to look at other ways of teaching kids. Look to other schools who have had a lot better success than the Ferndale School District. Where over half of our students fail to meet basic. Science, reading and math scores, not not even fifty percent. And I know that there are schools out there that do things quite differently. And I would invite having other representatives from successful schools come and make presentations. What are you doing? How could we do that and give parents the option of piloting something in our district?
Thank you. Candidate Machado, we're gonna start with you this round. Graduation rates and academic achievement vary among different student populations. How do you plan to address these disparities and improve overall student outcomes?
That is a very good question. And if you would allow me to start answering with a quote. And I I truly believe this. It says, if you wish to persuade me, you must think my thoughts. Feel my feelings and speak my words. And this is by Marco Tullius. I think that we need to understand where our kids are. We need to assess them and we need to make sure. That once we understand where they are, we can put a plan together. And I think that my background as a as a person that is strongly into advocacy, that's what I do for. For a living. I advocate, I'm in regulatory affairs. I deal with policy and procedures and I have had several. Many board experiences as as a director that I know how to work with people. I know that the greater good is what we need to focus on. And we need to make sure that by understanding the curriculum and how that affects our kids. And tailor it so that we can be addressing all of our kids and not just one group. I think it's very important. Giving options, giving opportunities and considering. What we have right now and what we can have based on on the options on the table.
Thank you. Candidate Button, your response, please?
Could you please repeat the question?
Graduation rates and academic achievement vary among different student populations. How do you plan to address these disparities and improve overall student outcomes?
Yeah, that is a good question. And I think that when we make decisions that are board, as a board, we need to be looking at disaggregated data. To see how the impacts are on various populations. And if there's any disparity that that is seen from this, these decisions, that we need to change what we're doing. When it comes to graduation rates. I. I wish I could say what I would do with that, but. I'm not sure. How do we get kids to stay engaged in their entire career? I I think maybe that's a pointing towards doing things quite differently than we have been doing them. So that they feel like they are progressing and and can achieve that. I think that if we have other options on the table besides just what's happening now in the classrooms. And had some choices about how kids want to move forward in their paths. I think that that could potentially solve some of those problems.
Thank you. Candidate Jefferson, your response, please?
Thank you. It's a good question. I think a lot of it, you know, is is really as board members getting out into the community. Having an understanding of, you know, those stats that Nancy was speaking about and, you know, where. Maybe some populations are struggling, you know, go out and and talk to them and find out, you know, what's going on. How can we help? What policies can we make as a board to help support these families and these childrens? Speak to the, you know, the superintendent to to look and hear from the teachers. What are they seeing? What are they hearing? And what are their thoughts? Their frontline, their frontline, they know best about what's going on. And then, you know, those, ta- take a look at those shining stars, you know, those ones that are being successful. What kind of environment are they in and are we able to replicate that or help replicate that in other areas? And. So I think a lot of it is gonna be outreach and doing the work of listening to people and in connecting with them in a meaningful way. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Erickson, your response, please?
Certainly. I think that, you know, both. Well, all three candidates that have spoken so far brought up good ideas. It's exciting. At our last board meeting, we actually saw some of that disaggregated data. One of the things that's always been a challenge is data and looking at data and having data that was. Timely, because you need it at the time so you can respond and be effective. And this, we just recently hired as the district, a person to work data and tweak it. And provide it in a form that we can look at some of those things and see where different population groups, different. Student populations where they're succeeding, where they're not. It was exciting to see some of the improvements that have been made post-COVID, because certainly COVID had a big impact on things. It's also getting the students and hearing from them what can get them engaged. As Tony said, listening to parents, listening to teachers, but also finding things that engage the students. Because when the students are engaged in learning, they tend to learn much better. If it's a subject they're interested in, if it's. If we show them the relative. Reason for learning, you know, to learn math is not, you know, no one gets excited about it. But when you learn it in how it affects your life and how it is important, that helps you get involved with it. And so I think making things education relative and showing students how they can use it in their future.
Thank you. Candidate Perry, your response, please?
I think we always need to remember that the different demographics and and different things is that we don't sometimes understand, like. Kevin Erickson was talking about in a different question, we don't understand from the standpoint we have what a child does. And so sixteen, seventeen-year-old might have to leave high school so he can help make money for his family because his mom is sick. And that might be why he dropped out of high school. We might have a girl that dropped out of high school because she got pregnant. Or maybe they even feel unsafe because of different things that are going on in the high school, bullying, drug issues. And it might be drug issues that they're dealing with and suffering about. So I think that that's something we always need to look at and and wonder why, you know, are some of these people leaving the school? In such a faster rate sometimes. And and, you know, when you don't have a parent that's an advocate in your corner to graduate. It's, it would be hard for me to get out of bed, you know, if I didn't have mom and dad that wanted me to graduate so so well. I mean, I, because I, learning was not the easiest thing for me. And so I think that we need to remember that some of these children don't have that advocate for a parent. And maybe we need to help find them that for them. And it's really hard since we only have them for six hours a day, five days a week, for nine, ten months out of the year. So that's really hard. We need to find out how to be an advocate for those students that fall through the cracks.
Thank you. For this next round, we'll start with candidate Jefferson. The New York Times recently reported student absenteeism post-COVID has soared. In Ferndale, the OSPI reports that sixty-two point two percent of its students regularly attended school. In fact, every school district in Watcom County except Linden is below the state attendance average of sixty-seven point two percent. What policies would you propose to improve school attendance in your district?
Yeah, that's a good question. You know, a- again, you know, a lot of the discussion's been around student engagement. They wanna, they have to want to come to school. So, you know, making sure we have the right staff that are energetic and, you know, really support our children. And, you know, I think we're already doing a great job with the You Belong campaign and also recognizing those. Staff members that, you know. Are doing a a great job. I I know Dr. Dominguez, you know, goes out and, you know, she'll take pictures with her staff. And acknowledge and recognize the great work that they're doing. You know, just setting that tone and that vision of, you know, excellence. I think that helps the staff also feel good about what they're doing and that transfers down to the children. So continuing to support that direction, I think is important. And then, yeah, just making sure we keep it fun too. We sprinkle in some fun in there and. Where our educators can tie in, you know, the real, real life, you know, the things that kids are interested in. And into their academic and how it applies, I think is also important. And making sure to support that curriculum and. The field trips, I think, is another area that needs to be expanded on, you know, getting our kids out there to see the world.
Thanks so much. Candidate Button, your response?
Yes, absenteeism, kids are not engaged if they're not there. With sixty-two point two percent attending regularly, the inverse is true for the kids are not there. And I'm sure that that has a great impact on the test scores, which looks so abysmal. These kids want to, we need to get them to want to come to school because they love school, because they're excited to come to school. And that's why I think that we can't continue to just do the same old thing. Because it's not working. We need to bring in fresh, new, innovative ideas, different models. Not just the pass them along and if you survive till you're eighteen, you get a a graduation. Diploma. It needs to be where the kids have a lot more say over what they learn beyond the basics. So that they can come to school very excited about what they get to do. When they're done with their reading, math, science, history, they also need to be able to have a lot of autonomy and freedom. And what they choose to learn so that they can be excited about it. So that's why I think we need to invite in other models and listen to more successful schools. And see if we can create pilot schools within our district that students could opt in into. So then they could be excited about coming to school.
Thank you. Candidate Perry, your response, please?
Well, we've basically let kids sit around in their pajamas for two years, we're doing school online. And now we're making them put on real clothes and get on a bus to that early in the morning. So no wonder we're having a hard time. I don't wanna get up and go get going some days. And I think that we need to, we've. Kind of had mental health days for adults and I think adults have transferred that to children and said, okay, you can stay home. Is the reason a child is wanting to stay home, is it because they're being bullied at school and nobody's addressing the bullying issue? So he says, I don't wanna go to school today, mom. I know it, you know, fun Friday. I know it. A big fun, you know, activity today, but they don't wanna go because they know they're gonna get picked on by the big bully. And so we need to address that issue as well. We need to say where. And I think we need to talk to parents and say, why is, why are our kids going home? We need them here to get makeup for these learning losses. We cannot do it from home anymore. And I think we need to have a program with the parents and say, it's unacceptable to do this. What, why are your kids at home? And ask that tough question. And see, because they are the ones that are ultimately letting them stay home. So we need to talk to parents about it, definitely.
Thank you. Candidate Erickson, your response?
Definitely absenteeism is an issue when it comes to learning, because if the students aren't there, we can't teach them. When those students come back, teachers need to back up and reteach and that impedes the progress of the other students that are there. So absenteeism is a big issue, but I don't think there's a one-size-fits-all answer. If you look at the demographics of absenteeism, there's different absenteeism rates between different racial groups, different demographics. And and so we need to reach out to our community, educate our parents, help them to understand. We need to partner with them to find out why kids don't wanna come. Not just assume, well, this is what we think it is, but we need to find out the right answers. And help get the kids in the seats, help them to understand the importance of being there and how that plays a role. You know, is one, I heard a teacher recently talking about, you know. We had a program a few years back before COVID of, you know, rewarding classrooms when they had a high attendance rate. Well, elementary kids aren't responsible for driving themselves to school, you know, parents are involved. So we need to look at the different levels and find out what's happening. I think academic or extracurricular activities tend to be a real driver for students to be there and keep their grades up. So I think the wide berth of extracurricular activities it offers helps. I think we need to explore, are there more areas where we can do that to increase the attendance rate?
Thank you. And candidate Machado, your response, please?
Yeah, I I love the energy that the kids bring on the first day of school. There's two reasons why they're so excited when they go to school. The first one is they go see their friends. And second one, there's nothing better than grab a new pen and a new note, a new notebook. And that was exciting for me when I was, when I was young. Definitely low attendance is a sign of engagement, as as everybody said. And and what happens? Well, we need to improve morale, we need to improve safety, we need to improve. What is happening in our schools that is maybe detracting our kids to to continue in being in and engaged. A lot of it is, we have lost our why. We go to school to learn. We go to school to make sure that we have friendships, meaningful friendships. That are gonna last li- lifetime and seems like we're scared to go to school right now. So there is, you know, true understanding of our why changes attitudes and behaviors quicker than a study of behavior changes behavior. Or improves improves behavior. What we need to do is really motivate our teachers. We need to give them the tools and ability to 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 be engaged. Our kids will be engaged with that. And maybe the first day feeling of going to school will continue until the end.
Thank you. We'll start with candidate Erickson this time. Earlier this year, the Mount Baker Superintendent reported the district. Was facing a three million dollar budget cut. This is an issue facing all districts in our county due to the end of COVID funding, increasing costs, levy lids and a decline in student enrollment. What can a school district board member do to ensure adequate funding for the district?
Well, I'm happy to say that due to, you know, good financial decisions, I don't feel like Ferndale's in a a bind. A bind as many districts are. There are a lot of districts that have had to lay off teachers. And that means cutting programs. And so we haven't had to do that. Um, I think the the biggest thing that we can do is to advocate for the state to live up to its end of the bargain. Um, the state constitution says that the paramount duty of the state is the education of our children. And that means funding it. All too often, the state is producing um mandates for the schools. You need to do this program or that program. But they don't provide any funding for it, or they fund in ways that that don't make any sense. And so one of the roles as a school board member um that we do is advocating to the legislature, talking to them and explaining to them. Hey, you passed this law. I know it, you know, made sense to you guys, but here's how it really works in the real world. So I think we need to work with our legislators year round to make sure that we're advocating for appropriate funding for the schools. We also need to help them understand and recognize the needs that we have. Um, and then we need to be transparent with our community to make sure that, you know, they understand the things that we are are bringing forth with our levies and our bonds. And make sure that we're being wise stewards of those dollars so that they're willing to continue supporting. More programs means more dollars and so we wanna provide what the community wants.
Thank you. Candidate Perry, your response?
I think we need to always uh remember that. It whether the money comes from federal tax dollars, state tax dollars, or local levies on property taxes. It's the tax, it's us that pays for it. And so it doesn't just come magically from, you know, Big Daddy in Olympia. We always need to be transparent. And we also always need to. Be, you know, let the community know that we are going to be losing out on funding. If you know that your enrollment is down and you're gonna be losing out on funding, then you should be tightening your belt buckle a few years before that and say, okay, what do we need? But we also need to make sure that we're not adding more people onto our staff. That aren't necessary. We added a fifteen percent increase in administration this last year in Ferndale. And I'm wondering if that was necessary, if that was a necessary thing. So we always need to be. Absolutely transparent with the taxpayers about where the money is going, what it's being used for. And why we have to ask for more every single time, every few years. And I think that's really important to the taxpayers because all they see most of the time is they see, if you don't vote for the levy, you hate kids. And then it doesn't, it fails. And then they see that their tax, property tax dollars has gone up and then they're mad, they're mad one way, they're mad the other. And it's a no, it's a no win argument.
Thank you. Candidate Machado, your response, please?
Um, yeah, I'm a lobbyist for a trade association. And what we need to do is advocate, advocate, advocate. The best way of advocating for something is education. I know we're talking about education here. But the best way that we can let others know. How the, there's consequences to their decisions is by educating. And I think that we can work together and that's something that as a board uh member, I would do. I would try to educate those that are responsible to make decisions for 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 the state. And um I think that we need to be good stewards of the monies that we have. We need to definitely be responsible, but we also need to be transparent. We need to be open. We need to let people know what is happening, what is, where we are at all times. And then there's no surprises. And and then we can get the support or we can get uh the the decline. But at least we know where we are. And if we're good stewards of our of of our resources, we're gonna be in good shape. But most importantly is that we allow others to understand through education. How that actually their decisions have consequences, direct and indirect in our ju- the the education of our kids.
Thank you. Candidate Button, your response, please?
Yes, um, I'm glad to hear Kevin say that Ferndale is in a really good position financially and we are not struggling like Bellingham is. That's good to hear. We've had a thirty six percent increase in per pupil cost over the past four years. So there should be lots of money there. When the bond was passed, it took two times to pass it. The first time it was floated, it was um voted down. The second time, a promise was made that during the duration of the twenty years that people would be paying off the bond. That the property taxes for the levy would not be increased over a dollar fifty per assessed thousand dollars. So far, um, the current board has put forth two different proposals to get the. Back from Mark Dibok about how much money will come in if we propose this amount or that amount. Both of those amounts exceeded the dollar fifty promise that was made to the Ferndale voters. And I would hate to see a levy fail because the thought, the board. Uh, did not keep the promise of capping the assessed value at a dollar fifty as was promised.
Thank you. And candidate Jefferson, your response, please?
Thank you. Being fiscally responsible is is a very important responsibility of the board. You know, a lot of it is gonna be um educating and understanding what our current expenses and operation needs are. And then, you know, helping to to educate our community and educate our voters on. You know, where we're at and being transparent with our operating costs and why things are costing. And then listen to them, you know, it's it's a matter of finding balance um. Within the the, all the stakeholders involved, the children first and foremost, uh, the taxpayers. You know, the education uh team members, staff. Um, you know, and then developing those strategic plans for when, you know, if we are not able to to find. Uh, a happy medium, you know, like where, what are our options to supplement that? Are there ways that we can create partnerships and still achieve the overall goals? Um, you know, can we ask for parent volunteers, you know, trying to explore uh options outside of the box to. Meet what our end goal is, um, you know, those are my thoughts on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we are gonna start with candidate Machado for this question. Special education programs are vital for students with diverse needs. How do you plan to support and improve these programs in our district?
That's a, that's a very good question. Um, a hundred percent support from me. And um, there, there are, there are several disabilities. And and there's many ways that we can help out. Um, for sure, when I jump on the board, I will be very, very supportive. And try to understand the needs of our district, try to understand the needs of our kids. And and come up with ways with other, our, the other board members to improve it. Um, unfortunately, I'm not very familiar with it. Uh, right now, but I can tell you that I am very supportive. And as I, as I said before, I wanna meet our kids where they are and that is my goal to make sure. That we meet them there and we help them and we build them from, and so they can achieve. To their best potential, their personal potential, individual potential, the the best achievements that they can get.
Thank you. Uh, candidate Jefferson, your response?
Um, yeah, I think advocacy is gonna be a key in this aspect. Uh, making sure that we do have the the resources needed to support special needs um. Services, advocacy with the legislation, advocacy with the community. Um, again, you know, taking a look at those partnerships, taking a look at how we can provide a wraparound, you know, to support. Um, special needs. Yeah, I think there's a lot of options out there for us and I think just. Exploring them, you know, even seeking out grant funding. There's a lot of grant funding out there um for people that want to. Support um these causes. These situations. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Button, your response?
Yes, um, wow, I think that what has happened for uh special education. Over my lifetime has been fabulous. When my brother was born with Down syndrome. He was not even allowed to go to school when he was a little guy. It took quite a few years. Before parents advocated and were heard for special education to become a part of public schools. Unfortunately for my brother, it wasn't soon enough. But for the kids that we have now in schools, I applaud that every child is being taught. That every child has the opportunity to reach their highest potential. And I definitely would advocate for special ed programs to get what they need so that those kids can get what they need.
Thank you. Candidate Perry, your response, please?
Yeah, I think that special education is, it needs our support and I advocate for it wholly because I was in special education. I had a son who had an I E P in Ferndale. And I think we don't understand, some of the best teachers that I had were the ones that had special learning needs growing up as well. And so I think one of the best things that we can do is have great teachers that that understand the problems and understand the issues. I was talking to a mother and she said, my son had an I E P and the teacher was getting frustrated with him. Because he would just doodle in class instead of doing the math lesson. And I said, I understand what that means because he's. So far behind, he doesn't even understand where they're at, so he can't even catch up at that point. And that's really hard for a kid to be at. They feel stupid. They feel like they're not. It's not that they're not trying, it's just they don't even know how to catch up. And so sometimes the individualized tutoring that we have available to us through um government funding, state funding would be a great idea. But we also, I know that when my son was getting his specialized care with a uh speech therapist. He had a great experience with the same speech therapist, but I know she misdiagnosed another student in his class for years on end. And so we need to be following up and watching some of these uh special education teachers to make sure that they are always. On the ball. And so I think that's where we need to be with special education.
Thank you. Candidate Erickson, your response?
Definitely advocacy is a a big part of it. Um. You know, those kids with special needs and special educational needs definitely need our support. Uh, the challenge is that that is one of the big underfunded areas coming from the state. Um, the state has also um told us that we have too many kids that are designated as special needs or needing I E Ps. And it's like, well, kids don't come in packages that there's only twelve point three percent or whatever their their limit is. And so we need to help educate those people that are writing the laws so that they understand. This is where the reality is and what's happening. Um, I'm proud to say in Ferndale, we have taken a stand and we're gonna educate those kids. And we're finding ways to fund it through grants, through other programs, through shifting dollars. Um, but it is something that the the board and and parents and community members. Need to advocate for and and tell our state legislatures and our, the Office of Student Instruction. Those are things that they need to, they can't set limits, you know, you can't say there's only gonna be, you know, again, twelve point three percent of special needs kids. You have to meet the kids where they're at and we've talked about that in many other areas, but special education is is a primary example of it.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to our last question before we have closing statements. And this time we're starting with candidate Button. Bullying and student safety are often concerns in our schools. How would you work to create a safe and inclusive learning environment for all students?
Well, I think you have to have a multifaceted approach to that because there isn't one quick fix to that. But I do believe that bringing back SROs into the school would be a very positive thing to do. I remember when I was a teacher that um Officer Gammage would come into Central Elementary. And he'd have lunch with the kids and the kids would flock to him and that created a really positive. Um, image for the children of police officers and there was a level of respect there. And I thought that that was a really positive thing. He wasn't at Central very often, but um I know he had a lot of different schools to go to and I'm sure his major obligation was to the high school, I would imagine. I think also that we need to um. Look at the data, a check the data about um disaggregated, who is getting bullied? And why? Where is it happening? And uh address it from many different angles. I have heard when I've been outdoor knocking, talking with people, that it is an issue in our schools. And so it needs to be something that we bring up right away. Um, on the board and address it, change what we're doing because what we're doing right now isn't working because it is a problem in our schools.
Thank you. Candidate Jefferson, your response?
Um, yeah, so far on the board, what I've seen, you know, we have the You Belong campaign. We're really trying to be inclusive of all students. Um, and making sure that our schools are a safe place for them. They can feel comfortable being who they are. That is like first and foremost for me, our children need to feel safe and accepted in order to be able to be educated. Um, we have safety reviews. Uh, we've recently added locks um to doors, so we're looking at it from that aspect. Um, I believe we have a scheduled list of how we go through our audits of our policies and procedures. Uh, I know there's a, I'm failing to remember, but like it, and we're. I think we're trying to create this overall responsibility of safety for everyone. Um, with everyone. So our students, you know, if you see it, say it, tell someone, you know, um, the teachers are being involved. In safety and being taught safety protocols. The administrators, um, we're partnering with the schools, um, you know. We're educating a lot. I think doing more outreach um education for, you know, the families, I think that could be built on. And then making sure that everybody knows where the support is, where they can go for support if they're stressed. A lot of people came out of COVID in debt, you know, bills weren't paid. That puts a lot of stress on people and they're still trying to climb out of that. So thank you for the question.
Thank you. Candidate Erickson, your response, please?
Could you repeat the question, please?
Bullying and student safety are often concerns in our schools. How would you work to create a safe and inclusive learning environment for all students?
So definitely safety goes hand in hand with learning. Um, if kids don't feel safe, if teachers don't feel safe, no, no learning's gonna occur. And parents should be able to feel safe sending their kids to to the schools. Um, I've been real impressed, we just recently had a uh some. Concerning emails come to uh the people at Vista. And there went into not necessarily a lockdown, but it's a holding pattern there and worked with the Ferndale Police. And were able to make sure that everybody was safe, that things were accounted for. Um, and I think students are learning the avenues as far as reporting those things. Um, so I think we're creating a much better. Situation where kids know, you know, you tell, if you see something that looks odd, if you look, that looks out of the ordinary, you know. Confide in somebody, tell somebody that is in authority that can change those things. So I think continuing those efforts is important. Also continuing to help kids feel safe at school emotionally, um, if they're going through a problem. Uh, unfortunately, not every kid has a safe situation at home. Um, so having somebody at school that they can count on, that they can go to. And that they can feel like they can tell so they can find that support cuz sometimes kids don't know where to go to help get the safety or to get the support that they need.
Thank you. Candidate Perry, your response?
Yeah, I I definitely think that um getting student resource officers in the school would would definitely help with a lot of our issues in the high school level. And making it um a more familiar police officer for the kids to see on a daily basis. Um, I think as far as bullying, that hits hard for some kids. And when they don't feel that there's anything done about it, when parents feel that the child is just getting a slap on the wrist. And just sent back into the classroom to to do it all over again the next day. It really creates a distrust and a frustration with these parents. And so I think we need to find out where we can create policy. And say, you know, I don't wanna say the kid can't come to school, but we we need to figure out what are the um consequences for bullying? So that we don't, we can nip it in the bud so that kids always feel that they're safe and that teachers have their back. And I know that we don't wanna be a tattletale, but it's terrible to, you know, have the teacher turn her back to the blackboard and then, you know, somebody punches you. And everybody sees it, but nobody says anything about it. And that. And everybody sees it, but nobody does anything about it. And that doesn't feel good for any kids. So we need to have an environment where the kid can go to the teacher and say, this is happening. I need you to step in and help. And she does, she or she does. And so I I wanna cre- find out how we can create a policy that works with that.
Thank you. And candidate Machado, your response, please?
Yeah, we we live in a world that is putting a lot of pressure on our kids to fit in. And trying to fit in breeds bullying. Um, the, what is the antonym of fit in? It is actually belonging, which is really interesting. And that's why I do like the the You Belong program because belonging is the opposite of fitting in. When you fit in, you're trying to make yourself change in order to be able to be somewhere. And I think that what we need to do is make sure that our kids feel that they belong in their space. Uh, there's something I call the righteous firm kindness. And and I exercise this type of of discipline at home. And and I, I know it works because um I know that my kids are not bullies. I can tell you that. Uh, there has to be discipline. There has to be, there there have to be consequences for a behavior. There has to be education too. Under uh, we need to educate what bullying is, what it looks like. And but most important, the most important part of this formula that I know that it works and helps is love. We need to love our kids. The teachers need to see them as 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 a mentor, sees them and try to help them out. And I know that when we use discipline, education and love, we are able to be successful in our in our quest to help them belong.
Thank you for answering all of the questions this evening. So we're moving on to the closing statements. And now you'll have one minute, you'll each have one minute to make a closing statement. And we're gonna start with candidate Perry.
I wanna thank League of Women Voters for having me and all the rest of these people here. This is a great experience for me. And I think it's just a fantastic opportunity. I've never remembered my, all my time here in Ferndale as a voter. Um, when we've had six candidates for school board, and I think that that shows a great influence that we're having on the children of this community. And that's what I wanna do. I wanna be the type of person that you can approach and you can come and talk to me, whether you agree with me or not, or whether I agree with you. I don't understand sometimes the issues until I hear from the problem. So I think that that it's fantastic that we have six great candidates to run for school board right now so that we can um better um serve the children and the people of Ferndale and the and our district so that we can help these kids achieve. And someday, these kindergartners are gonna be voting for the next school board candidate and teach them all of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Candidate Erickson, your closing statement, please?
I too would like to thank the League of Women Voters and the candidates for being here tonight. Um, you know, i- it hasn't been often that we've had this kind of um involvement in the student or in school board elections. And I think anything that how, that helps get people involved and engaged about education and learning about it is beneficial to not only the district, but also to the students that are involved. So I think that's a great opportunity. Um, I it just want to say thank you to the candidates for some of the great ideas that they've brought up. Um, and also just want to emphasize, I wanna be, you know, as a current board member and hoping to serve again, want to be open to the community and for input. I feel like I bring the experience that the board could use, particularly with a new superintendent and with what's potentially gonna be a very young board. I think we need some experience to help guide and avoid some of the pitfalls of the past as we move forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And candidate Machado, your closing statement, please?
Yeah, I would like to uh express my my appreciation for this forum. Not only the forum, but I have to say that the questions, the type of questions that were asked that were directed to our district. And um and I really appreciate that they were very actually uh positive and 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 constructive. So thank you, thank you for that. I wanna do the best for our kids. I wanna, I wanna see them thrive. I have three wonderful kids. Of course, I'm super biased. And uh, but I I love them with all my heart. And just like I love my kids, I love all the kids in the school district. Recently, uh, uh, we, we got an exchange student from from Spain with a totally different background. And uh, and we love her and she's part of our family. And I wanna love all the kids in the Ferndale district. So thank you very much. You're muted, Allison.
Has to happen once, right? Um, candidate Jefferson, your closing statement, please?
Uh, I gotta say thank you too. Thank you for hosting this. Um, I wanna thank the other uh candidates for stepping forward. This is a big responsibility. Um, and you know, I just, I appreciate and value each and every one of you. Um, I appreciate your voice that you bring to the table. Um, and so I'm I'm glad we're all able to be here. You know, I I, from my position, you know, children are first. Children are first and foremost. They gotta feel safe. They gotta feel like they belong. I strongly believe in that. Um, we do need to come together collectively as a community and decide, you know, what can we do and how can we help our education system create the best education for our children, our children, our communities' children. So, um, how we're gonna do that, sometimes, you know, we're not gonna agree, but you know, we do need to come together in a good way and make that determination. Thank you so much. I appreciate you.
Thank you. And candidate Button, your closing statement, please?
Thank you, League of Women Voters. Um, I agree with the other candidates. It's really been wonderful to participate in this, a learning experience. And I appreciate the things that everyone here said. If I have the honor of being elected to the board, I can tell you that I would bring um I would bring experience of being a teacher and that perspective onto the board, knowing how the decisions made by the district and administration affect classrooms. And I would be very mindful of each of the decisions that we make. I want transparency with parents. I don't think any policies should be passed without the open discussion that people can have their say in. And I also really think that we can educate our students within the budgets that we have. And we don't need to raise taxes to do that. We just need to support what we're doing as far as uh um how much money we're spending on it. And we wanna do the best for our kids.
Thank you. On behalf of the League of Women Voters, I thank all the candidates for being here today and for their interest in running for public office. Voters can find more information about the candidates online at votefouroneone.org and in your voter pamphlet. And ballots will be mailed on October eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Your ballot must be postmarked or in a ballot drop box before eight P M on November seventh, twenty twenty-three. Please remember to sign the ballot envelope. If mailing by postal service, we recommend mailing early. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.